It is now 6:00 PM. We will, the, we're starting our regular board meeting and we will be adjourning to closed session at 6:00 PM. I hope that's not a significant of how the night goes. All right. The time is now 7:01. We'd like to reconvene for our regular open session. Want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. As a reminder, the meetings of the board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBL ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The board does receive the agenda and all supporting documents several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive and answer any of the, and get the answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular board meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. I'd like for everyone to please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Fagan, do we have any commendations or recognitions tonight?
We do. We have an inspiring moment tonight. Today is the first day of school unlike any other in UMBL ISD's history. Well, that is true, isn't it? And while this year is going to be different, I know that our UMBL ISD family and both our values and our principles will continue to guide our decisions and our work. Our staff, students, and parents will make it through together, continuing our commitment to safety, instructional excellence, and personalized learning. Tonight's inspiring moment features some interviews about on-campus and online learning.
We are so excited to begin the 2020-21 school year. School's gonna look a little different this year. We'll have both online learners and we'll have face-to-face learners on campus. Our students will notice some changes. We'll be wearing our PPE, our personal protective equipment.
So for the last four and a half months or so, we've been following and looking and reviewing CDC guidelines, TEA guidelines, health services guidelines to make sure that we have the most relevant information of what things are successful in stopping the spread of COVID-19.
We have brought disinfectant and hand sanitizer into each of our classrooms along with wipes and spray with microfiber towels, student partitions, face shields, and gloves. We will be disinfecting all areas of the building daily, including our outdoor learning spaces and playground areas.
We've added some safety features for our staff and students to make things, the air's a little bit better and cleaner. We have piped in outside air here to each unit, so they're getting outside air. We've also, in these new air handlers, we've got the ultraviolet lighting in here and they shine on the coil and the air comes through here and it kills germs and such as it comes through the air handler. We're also replacing filters with the MIR13 air filter. They catch a smaller particle.
While student safety is important, the safety of our staff is as critically important as well. So we're putting things in place that allow us to maintain that six-foot social distancing, such as allowing our classrooms to be set up a little differently, giving our teachers each a plexiglass barrier for when they're sitting down in close proximity to their students. We'll also be focusing on hygiene, having great hygiene. You'll see a lot of sanitizing, sanitizing stations. We've got, we'll be focusing on washing our hands, keeping ourselves healthy. This year, our students will stay in what we're calling pods or families. Those are the homerooms and those kids will, will interact and collaborate and have school as usual within that cohort. They won't be mixing around with other homerooms or groups of students.
On campus, we will try our best to keep middle school students and secondary students socially distant within the classroom, spacing those students out. We have staggered release times, so there's not as many students in the hallways and they will be spread out during lunch and have more spaces available to eat lunch.
We're excited to have our online learners join us, too. They'll be joining us with their online teachers where they'll have content through the learning management system, the LMS.
So at the K-2 level, the LMS would be Seesaw. And at 3-5, here at Lake Shore at least, it's Google Classroom. And that's predominantly what's happening at most elementary schools is K-2 Seesaw and then 3-5 Google Classroom. And then from secondary, they're using Schoology. And that's just really the mode of transportation for the content to get to the students.
For any student to be able to engage in our learning management platform, you would log in through MyUML. Once you're in MyUML, you'll have access to whichever of the three learning platforms your school is using. Once you log in through MyUML, your link will be right there.
Whether they're an online learner or a face-to-face learner, they'll be using the same mode so that they can get the information they need in the same way. We're trying to give parents one access point for all of the items that their kids would need. And if there's ever a point for a pivot, if there's ever a need for them to switch from one to the other, that they're still engaged and there's no break in that education and how they receive that content.
A big part of what we do is really trying to engage the students. We want that connection. We want that, that recognition in our students and our parents. We really want them to feel that the curriculum is there, we're all here for them, and we're there guiding them through this educational experience.
High school students tend to have a little bit more autonomy in their families. Families trust that they're logging on, that they're getting into their work. And sometimes that happens and sometimes it doesn't happen. And so we need to be able to connect with them to help pull them out of their disconnectedness.
Things are gonna look a little bit different for these first couple of weeks as we are all virtual and all online. We'll still be making sure that students are engaged and present daily. So we will be able to take attendance and see student engagement every day as students get on through MyUML into their learning management platform, whether that is Seesaw, Google Classroom, or Schoology.
Part of this is that we really want our students to be challenged. We want to have the appropriate amount of rigor on the digital format. So part of that also is communicating to parents what is expected, what we really want our kids to get and how we can support them, not just as teachers and parents, but how they can support themselves, too.
Students will have expectations as they would in face-to-face instruction. They're going to have daily assignments to complete. They'll have instructional material, whether that's videos from their teacher or research that they need to do on their own. But the rigor will be there in every single course as we would set those high expectations for students with face-to-face instruction.
I think a really important thing to remember right now is that communication is key. We really want parents to feel comfortable contacting our teachers and contacting the school when they are having trouble understanding. We have help desk times. We have learning platforms like Seesaw or Google Classroom. We have things where they can contact the teachers. And we know, we know everybody's world's chaotic and everybody has different concerns, but we know that we all have the same goal for our students, that we want them to achieve a high level of learning and progress to the next step in their education.
Operations Department. My mic just came back on, didn't it? Okay, one more time. A huge shout-out to all of our teachers, our operations, our maintenance, our IT, all these departments, all summer long and, and every day, are working so hard to make this pivot, whether it's installing filters, whether it's installing a new sanitizing methods, changing the way we've taught, using new platforms. People are doing a phenomenal job. I could not be more proud of every single department, every single staff member in UMBL ISD. So thank you, Jonathan, for that video and thank you to all the folks who were in it. That's it for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fagan, and thank you, Jonathan, and everyone that participated in that. All right, the next item on our list is questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items and other matters. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of group may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. So at this time, I would like to start again. Tonight's meeting is like last week. We're gonna have some in-person and some are live via video conference. So we'll start with the in-person speakers first, and our first speaker is Ms. Kami Lee.
... in high school students to full-time in-person learning no later than September 8th. Virtual learning has proven to be grossly ineffective, a logistical nightmare, and it leaves our students feeling isolated, lonely, overwhelmed, and emotionally exhausted. It made my heart sink watching them log into their Zoom classes this morning, and frankly, it's depressing to think of them sitting and staring at those screens all day. I understand that we need to do this in phases, but I believe that we can do better for them and I have a responsibility and we have a responsibility to reevaluate the decision made last week. Suicide is the third leading cause of death for ages 15 to 24, and experts average that only roughly 30% of those depressed children were being treated for it. That leaves a whopping 70% of depressed kids who are hiding and suffering in silence. Now add virtual learning and isolation on top of that. I share these statistics to offer important perspective to people, but I'd be lying if I said it didn't often feel as though it went in one ear and out the other with no more than a frown and a sympathetic nod of agreeance to acknowledge it. For anyone that has not experienced the repercussions of depression in our youth, let me tell you that I know them all too well. With two at home that are suffering with depression as of now, I have already lost one teenager to suicide three years ago, and I will fight like hell to see that I don't lose another. My kids need to be back in school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Ms. Holly Matherley.
I want to thank you for being concerned about the safety of our UMBL ISD family and the community in which we live. Delaying the start of in-person school was a wonderful first step to keeping everybody safe. Mr. Sutton assured me that PPE is available at all of our schools, but I am concerned because teachers are reporting that they do not have enough PPE, they don't have enough masks, hand sanitizers, or disinfectants. According to the Back to School website, individual staff members are encouraged to wear any PPE that they feel they need. Why isn't the district providing staff with PPE? Aren't they also a part of the UMBL ISD family? UMBL ISD has a responsibility to keep every member of our family safe from COVID-19. In order to do that, I respectfully request that the district provide a regular supply of PPE such as masks, sanitizers, face shields, and disinfectants to all the faculty and staff for the duration of the COVID-19 epidemic in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next will be Ms. Larissa Powell.
Good evening. My name is Larissa Powell and I have two children enrolled in UMBL ISD. Over the past 10 months, I have stood before the school board several times on the issue of safety within our district. In May, my 13-year-old daughter started a campaign to provide all Kingwood staff with reusable face masks. She's been able to provide the entire staff at 12 public and private schools in Kingwood masks so far, and she's not done. I'm proud of my daughter for her fortitude in procuring safety for these essential workers, but I am disheartened by the lack of leadership in our district and that teachers are afraid that they have not been provided adequate amount of PPE. On the district website, there are currently 120 or more open positions within the district. How many of these teachers resigned because they felt the district could not assure them reasonable safety accommodations? Who's gonna teach our kids? Will you, your children, or grandchildren be in the crowded hallways on August 24th or later without proper PPE? Please raise your hand. I'm sincerely interested. I'm begging you to please provide a regular supply of masks, sanitizers, disinfectants to your staff members within the district. If a 13-year-old can play in...
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Kathryn Chapman.
Hi, I come to you guys tonight asking if you please reconsider letting the middle school and high school kids be back in the classroom September 8th. These same kids are at the grocery stores checking you out, pulling your curbside orders and making your food at local restaurants. They're also the local lifeguards in our neighborhood pools. The student athletes are also, that are in season, are expected to be in athletics on both A and B days. They're gonna be in class, at the school five days a week, but yet they can't be there five days a week to be in the classroom. I know a few of the high school kids that are going to opt out of the A and B schedule so they can do the online, that way they will see their friends more. Tomball Hoffman and Montgomery County, Montgomery ISD are just a few of the schools starting face-to-face on September 8th. I really hope you guys will follow them and return our high school and middle school kids to face-to-face learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ted McLean.
Good evening. Thanks for giving this opportunity to talk. I've come down here with this suit on so you can see that there are other alternatives. What I have here is a positive pressure hood. So I've got a filter back here and it's filling up this mask and so I'm protected. I can't get sick. We're gonna be moving forward based on everything you guys have been able to study and think this thing through, and we're assuming that we'll have a good outcome. Probably what's gonna happen is we're gonna get some surprises. We'll have to change course a couple of times. The state as a whole has already had to do that, and we can see from what's happening in Texas and other places that when we bring people together, especially in an uncontrolled situation, which is going to happen, then the virus is gonna spread. So this hood will protect the staff. And if you supply the staff with this hood, you won't have any teachers or bus drivers or janitors. If we're assuming that the students, the younger people... I'm sorry, what?
Sorry, now I'm on. Your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Ms. Lori Desette.
Members of the board, Dr. Fagan, good evening. I'm here tonight to earnestly request that the school board consider returning middle school students to full-time in-person learning by September 8th and high school students as soon as possible rather than keeping them part-time indefinitely. My daughter, Emily, is a junior at a Tascasita High School. She's a bright, funny, creative girl. She loves theater, she does cosplay, and loves history. She pushes herself to take AP classes despite challenges with ADHD, without, despite challenges with anxiety and depression. Keeping her on this part-time schedule indefinitely poses a much higher risk to her well-being than does a virus that impacts less than 1% of the children in our area. Please, I ask you to please get our teens back to school full-time as soon as possible. And also want to just say thank you for all that you guys are doing for our children and to your teachers and your staff and your admin, because I know that you guys are working hard, but please, let's get our kids back as soon as possible to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Burton. Richard Abram.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to say that on the door, there is a sign that says you must wear a mask in a building. I'm taking my mask off so that everyone can hear me clearly, but there's people up there that do not have masks on right now and there's no excuse for that. If you expect our children to follow rules, how can they follow rules when you do not follow the rules? Second of all, we have been engaged in a campaign to provide computers, laptops, and other educational devices for our children that do not get them. I was informed that there was laptops being given to our children, but there was not enough for those that are taking online classes. Also, I pose a question to you is that once we do have an incident to where a child is quarantined for whatever reason and cannot go to school, will that child be provided an educational electronic learning device? That's a question. Since there's no answer, also this morning, which was the first day of virtual learning, we had a big snafu. I represent over 50 families personally tonight that would like an answer to this question. Is what truly happened this morning, because from what we have gotten from you guys is, is that it was a cyber attack. Was it a cyber attack?
Your time has expired, sir.
Or was it an overload? So I need that information, please.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Your time has expired.
So I don't get an answer, right?
If it's not on the agenda, we are not allowed to answer the question.
Okay. And you're not gonna put on a mask, right?
Excuse me?
You're not gonna put on a mask, right?
I'm speaking just like...
Okay, I'm speaking, okay. But see, there's, throughout this point, there's several of you guys have taken your mask off and on the building it says to wear a mask.
That's enough, sir. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Okay, so you're not gonna put on a mask, you're not gonna follow your own rules?
Thank you for being here.
Okay.
Lori and Ken Washington. Okay, Mr. Odom, that seems to be all those of in-person speakers. If you can start teeing up our video conference speakers, please.
Mr. Ancom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for this opportunity. My wife and I, we have two kids in the district that started today, ninth grade. They've signed up for in-person school on the 24th. My concern is the back-to-school policy as it relates to masks. It currently does not mandate face coverings for the nose and mouth and states that schools, and I quote, "warmly welcome all PPE." This translates to once the mask order expires, students could do whatever they like. And surely each and every one of you all remember your high school years and what peer pressure will do to that warm welcome with no mandate in place. Kids will get dropped off wearing a mask, but we'll remove it once they enter the school to avoid ridicule. Not mandating and mandating a mask flies in the face of every federal, state, and local public health expert and is important to not only slowing the spread but keeping our schools open. I'd like to close with a question to every member. Why is it that you could dictate what my type of shirt, pants, you name it, my son and daughter could wear, but cannot mandate mask coverings until there's an FDA-approved vaccine or treatment?
Thank you very much.
Yes, Tesla Montane.
Today has been one for the history books, the first day of school in a pandemic. You've read the numbers, so I won't quote them. Speaking for myself, Tess Mustang, I am asking for equitable treatment of all students, no matter the mode of learning. Face-to-face is preferable. Everyone here agrees. Consider this, how dangerous is COVID to children and adults in a classroom? That's our sticking point. We want all people to be safe, but we have not agreed to the risk. If even one child or one adult ends up debilitated by COVID, is that acceptable? If you say COVID is not worse than the flu, then the risk is low, so face-to-face is great. But what if you're wrong? What if COVID is more serious? This virus is new and unknown. We've had centuries to study the flu. Then online would be safer. But are you supporting the online kids enough? Are you giving teachers enough time to meet online students' needs? Today's my humble issue seem to indicate that you're not. Please support online learners equally to face-to-face learners. Thank you very much for all of your time.
Thank you.
Timothy Almarin Diaz.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Yes. I've had some issue with some of the data being put out by some of your board members. Last week, I heard some confusing data, and y'all quoted it coming from Texas Medical Center. So I went back and researched it, because that's what I do as a health professional. And it seems to me you're pulling some small little faction of data to somehow get students and teachers back from face-to-face schooling. That doesn't make any sense when you're only creating a biological reservoir to continue the spread of the virus in the community itself. I would recommend, if you're not a professional, please get a professional. The Texas Medical Center is no more than 20 miles away. I also heard or confirmed you had five teachers come back in the first week with COVID-positive testing. How is that going to be kept low, at a low rate, with students and teachers both? And for PPE, we practice this years upon years. It's methodical.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Smith.
High percentage of students returning to in-person instruction at some elementary schools is very concerning. There are many classes in elementary schools with 20 or more students. Safety measures such as plexiglass dividers, UV lights, new AC filters are only at some schools. The body medical and scientific evidence clearly shows that physical distancing is the cornerstone of prevention, mitigation, and response to COVID-19, and yet UMBLE ISD has stated, quote, "physical distancing will not be possible within the classrooms," end quote. Yes, teachers and staff will have masks, but not all elementary students will be wearing masks. There's growing medical evidence showing that young children are indeed capable carriers of the coronavirus and can be infected and sickened with COVID-19 as well. Having almost full elementary campuses, back-to-classroom, and a lack of campus PPE for teachers and staff will not protect them from unmasked, undistanced elementary students. And undoubtedly, this will result in many more COVID-19 infections, transmissions, and sicknesses. Also, teachers and staff in UMBLE ISD urgently need a platform to anonymously voice their concerns. There is currently a strong climate of fear and intimidation of the administration felt by many UMBLE ISD teachers and staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nathan Lee.
Hello, I'm Nathan Lee, and I'm an elementary physical education teacher in the district. I have two requests today, one as an educator and the other as a parent. As an educator, I urge you to loosen the restrictions on our schools. The science does not support such rigid restrictions. And after an affinity meetings this past week, many PE teachers shared with me the feelings of being frustrated and defeated. We were left with the question, what does this even leave us to teach? I assure you, all specials teachers have worked hard this week creating lessons. Specials teachers play a vital role in the social and emotional development of our students. Very simply, I say, let us teach and let them play. As a parent, I ask you to resume full-time face-to-face learning in September for all our secondary students. It was sad to see my teenage children emerge from the resumed sessions today, stiff, unemotional, unengaged. This is the time in which their peer relationships become of most importance, and they start to develop the interests and personalities that will carry them into adulthood. Online school is not what is best for the development of our children. Our children need each other, and it is time that they are brought back together.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeffrey Gaspar.
Hello, my name is Dr. Jeffrey Gaspar, and I have a student who's starting first grade. As an engineer who plans for the worst-case scenario, I'm saddened and highly disappointed with the school district for failing to plan and prepare for this morning's rollout, but on all online learning for the 2020-year school year. It appears to me that district plans for online learning were based upon last year's rollout of actual online learning and failed to account for current need. Did no one in the district think to ask and listen to actual network engineers on what the district would need, what the rollout would look like, what protections are in place to ensure network stability, and what the district and networks will do to ensure everyone can log in at the same time? The district's idea of everyone logging into the system at the same time seems to counter to the ideas of normal in-school learning. All levels of school do not start at the same time. Why can this not be applied in the same manner for online learning? Why can't elementary start at one time and other schools fall? Finally, it seems that no one in the district stepped back and looked at the whole picture, but the day would look like how much traffic would be coming in and out, and where it would go, what the future looks like if and when schools could shut down again. IT disruptions for online learning will worry or beyond just discernment of learning at a later time. This can disrupt parents and sibling schedules for the day. I hope for my children...
Your time has expired.
...that this problem is a one-time issue and will not occur again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Gabriela Diaz.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Diaz, and I'm a graduate of UMBLE ISD. I started my teaching career 15 years ago when we opened Atascocita High School. I resigned from this district on August 1st, the Friday before we were supposed to start school, because this school board did not hold up its end of the bargain. I was expected to start school under the assumption that 10 days from that Friday, I was going to be standing face-to-face with students. I had a lot of concerns, not just about standing face-to-face with them at that time, but also that masks would not be required. From 6th through 12th grade, I watched girl after girl after girl have their skirt measured in this district. Football players don't get a choice on safety measures like wearing a helmet. Why are you putting the lives of my colleagues and my teachers? I'm also hearing teachers being muzzled, being emailed by principals, talking to them about their digital footprint. Right when teachers need to be reaching out to each other and having a support system, principals are intimidating them from sharing how they speak. I hope that you guys can fix the technological issues that we're still facing because of the last-minute planning on your part.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
Kate Brown.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a concerned parent of three children who attend three different campuses in UMBLE ISD. They will be attending online for right now, and today was eye-opening. There has been a lot of talk about how much better the online learning would be compared to the spring. However, I'm concerned with the class sizes. My fourth grader has 39 students in his online class. My ninth grader has 75 students in her AP geometry class. These numbers are not acceptable and not conducive to learning. How do you propose to make this fair and transparent learning environment for all students regardless of whether they are in-person or online? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Brandon Worley.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Brandon Worley. I'm a father of two girls in the district, the husband of a former teacher in the district, and a 10-year Navy veteran and a former paramedic. I have been beyond concerned about the communication coming from the district throughout this entire ordeal. The district itself has seemed to put forth the narrative that we're trying to listen to the parents and the teachers and the staff while also pushing through the communications that the district wants to open earlier and earlier than anyone else around us. In doing so, you'd think that the district would be prepared for actually starting school. And instead, as we've seen last week, getting emails from teachers up until 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, last night, the day before school, and emails from our teachers saying that, well, we hope the district has the apps up that we need to use tomorrow morning, and then this morning trying to log in, and everything crashing. And don't tell me that this is a cyber attack. You can't use that type of language. And if it is a cyber attack, we'll be issuing a Freedom of Information Act request to see...
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Wow, that was... Thank you very much.
Tucker Lee.
Hello, my name is Tucker Lee. I am a ninth-grade student, and this is my brother Isaac. After what we experienced today with online learning, this is not how we want to continue the rest of the school year. Both of us urge you to resume full-time face-to-face learning in the month of September for our middle school and high schools. We beg you to, please do not make us wait until October. We miss our friends, we miss our teachers, and we long for a sense of normalcy again. I will admit, rules and schedules do not sound like fun for us as teenagers. But as I look back over these past six months, the structure and accountability from daily face-to-face instruction provides is a world changer. Please open up our schools full-time as fast as you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Cutton.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to express appreciation to Dr. Fagan and the Board for working so hard together to come to a solution to return our kids to the classroom as soon as possible in a safe and secure environment. I also wanted to thank all UMBLE ISD administrators, educators, and staff for their tireless efforts to prepare for today, our first day of school. While it was not without hiccups, in true UMBLE ISD form, we overcame and will forge ahead in preparation for those students that wish to return to face-to-face instruction or continue virtually. While last week, the Board collectively provided a solution that allowed in-person learning to resume in a phased-in approach prior to the originally mandated September 8th date, there are many who are still affected by the plan of ongoing AB schedules at the middle and high school levels. With the lack of clear data matrix to guide the return, I implore the Board and senior administrators to identify a collective group of statistics that will allow them to clear paths to resuming everyday attendance at the secondary levels sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chloe Cutton.
I want to thank everybody for putting together a plan for us to return to face-to-face learning in middle schools, as I am a middle schooler. But for me, in-person learning every day is better because I can get into a constant schedule and be on campus for extracurricular activities every day. So I encourage you to help us get back to everyday middle school before October. I too want to say thank you to all the teachers and administrators that made it possible to get back to virtual learning today, and to thank all the schools and districts for figuring out a way to make it possible for sports to resume and all extracurricular activities. I've appreciated it, and I can't wait to get back to face-to-face learning on August 24th. But I too want to get into everyday in-class learning. In high school with pre-AP and AP courses, it's what's best for me and my learning. I encourage the Board to find the information that gives them confidence to get safely back to campus sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
That's all. It's ending queue.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. All right, that brings us to our next item, comments by individual board members. We'll start to my right, Mr. Lopez.
First of all, I wanted to say happy birthday, Mr. President. It's my understanding that you've turned 49 again. Congratulations. Seriously, happy birthday. Good friend. Also want to welcome everybody back to school. It was an interesting day in my house. My son woke up, made himself a cup of coffee, and sat in front of a computer all day. I don't like it at all. I want him to be back in school in person. But we've got to balance these things out as people who are responsible for this entire district. He will be going back in person and playing football this fall in the AB schedule, and it is my hope that he'll be going to school every day as soon as possible. But we don't know when that will be. I want to thank personally all the administrators, the teachers, for all the work that they've performed to date to get our schools ready. And just to, all the flexibility that they've shown, because it was the Board that wanted to make sure we had all the data upon which to make a decision. And to some, it seemed like a last-minute decision, but the administration was ready to do whatever the Board wanted to do. And so I want to just thank everybody for doing that and to be flexible as they've been, and for all the work that they performed. It means a lot to me as a parent of a child in this district, as well as a school board member. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Ms. Morrison.
Thank you. I just want to say, I am so glad that we're moving forward. You know, there's always hitches. We always have little bumps in the road. And a huge thank you to Destin and his crew for getting us up and running. And Nolan, just a huge thank you for all your staff, and seeing what all you have gotten to the schools and your staff. Congratulations, and just a huge thank you. And again, I like, Mr. Lopez, I want to thank all the staff, all the teachers. It's exciting to hear, and it's exciting to see some of the smiles. I mean, they're ready. They're ready. They were ready to get back and get going. And when you hear these students, and they're going to be ready to get back on the 24th so they can get in there and see their teachers and see what's going on. And I want to say, and Ms. Schules, thank you so much for last week. My elementary babies, you know, my learned colleagues up here, you know, they talk more to adults and big kids. For 40 years, I talked to little people, and they tell it like it is. Okay, we want to be there. So just a huge, huge thank you. And yes, Mr. Sidon, happy birthday. You made my husband, of whom many don't know, coached him in basketball and football. But the other day, when I told him it was your birthday, he said, "He really does make me old." So I just want to let you know that your next magic marker will be a little red and blue card. And then, and definitely, but enjoy every moment of it. Enjoy every moment, and a happy, happy birthday to this super, super guy.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that, and my happy birthday wishes to you, and enjoy it. You don't look a day over 69, as I like to say. And I can say that because I'm almost there.
You know, my doctor said I was in great health for someone that was 80 and 6'8".
There you go. You're even better. I just, just back to the inspiring moments. Dr. Fagan, doesn't Ms. Davies ever get excited about anything? She's off the chart. She's great. I'll just be real short. I just want to thank Dr. Fagan Cabinet for their leadership in the last, particularly the last couple of months, preparing, and all the campus principals and administration on those campuses, and of course, all our teachers, our counselors, our... And of course, all our, our teachers, our counselors, our nurses, you know, across the entire district, all the central office folks and all the support personnel, from nutrition to transportation to maintenance. I, I tell you, it is to me mind-boggling that, you know, what we've asked you guys to do, and not only do we ask, but you guys have done it. I mean, really, I think if you look back to 100-year history of this district, it would be, you'd be hard-pressed to find a time that comes even close to this. So I just want to say, you know, what, from what I've seen, what we've all seen, your response to what we've asked has been nothing short of phenomenal. And, and I don't, can't even find a bigger word to use, but just thank all of you for everything you've done. I know there's been disagreements on different things and, and of course, you know, and that's fine. People have different opinions on some things, but you guys have just stepped up in a phenomenal way. So I personally thank each and every one of you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. Sorry about that. Ms. Toomey.
So the gravity of the times and the situations that we've been confronted with over these last few months, and specifically the decisions that we've had to make through that time have really weighed heavy on me. I've spent a lot of time in prayer and study and reflection. I want everyone to know that no matter what side of the issue, although there's more than two sides, but no matter what where you fall on the various issues, you have been heard, you are being heard. Those of us up here are parents, some grandparents, many former teachers. I myself have two high school students. I have a freshman and a senior, both of which, they both want to go back to school in person, face-to-face, just as soon as possible. I have one of those, one of my two children who has an autoimmune disorder that is considered a high-risk student. I want to say specifically to Kami, I'm so sorry for your loss. The suicide amongst our teenagers is a very real, depression is very real. I've lost many friends when I was younger to that horrible tragedy, so it is something that is, has been heard. I heard an epidemiologist, I was listening to a podcast a couple of weeks ago, and he said that we needed to prepare for this school year to be a lost school year to be repeated next year. And I thought that is not only sad, there is no way that that is acceptable and will not be acceptable in this district. And so with that, I want to thank Dr. Fagan and her staff, the administrators, the teachers, for a wonderful, listen, we had issues today, but it was, it was so awesome to get back today. I stood outside the door of both of my kids while listening to their Zoom calls with their teachers. Those teachers were excited. They were wonderful Zoom calls, and it just lifted my spirits. And then along that same line, I just want to, again, I said, today's been kind of a heavy day for me. I decided to go treat myself for lunch at Maud Pizza, which pizza's not something I generally eat. And I got up to pay, and some wonderful lady named Nancy, whom I've never met, apparently paid for my lunch and told me, thank you for my service. I've never met her, but I did see, I did see her as she walked out, and she was a healthcare professional. She was wearing scrubs. And I thought, wow, my service? No, no, no. Thank you for your service. I wish I would have gotten the, the chance to tell her, but thank you so much, Nancy, if you're, happen to be listening. It was, it greatly appreciated. And then just last, happy birthday, Robert. I know, I, my birthday fell on a school board meeting last year, so it's an awesome, fun, fun, fun way to celebrate your birthday, but happy birthday. Awesome. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anglotti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we need to hustle up and go to Maud Pizza. I don't know about you. I'm, that's where I'm going, quick as I can. Thank you for all the speakers tonight. I tell you, it just, it never ceases to me, to amaze me how diverse opinions we have. It's just crazy when one person will think one thing, one person will think the absolute opposite, and I'm just amazed by that. But I appreciate all the opinions. I want to especially thank the Cotton Girls tonight. The week from tonight, I was talking to Mr. Lopez earlier. I'm going to be an empty nester. We take our youngest to Baylor. And it's just amazing to think that in 2008, our girls were having crushes on Luke Lopez when they were in kindergarten and first grade. So it's just, the Chloe Girls, the Chloe Girls, the Cotton Girls, really made my night tonight. I appreciate them. I can see my girls doing something like that. So thank you for all the speakers. And, Mr. President, you can thank Sydney, because when she came in last night, your wife had mentioned that it was your birthday and I should do something kind of silly. And you know, I'm not immune to doing that. So I've decided not to do it after Sydney, she said, what are you going to do for Mr. Sidon? And I said, well, he's our president, and there's a famous song, Happy Birthday, Mr. President, that Marilyn Monroe did. And I, and I can sing pretty well. No, but Sydney said I shouldn't do it, so we will not be doing that. So happy birthday, Mr. President.
I will not comment on that. That would get me in trouble, especially now that we're videoing board meetings.
That's right.
Ms. Lamond Dixon.
Okay, well, first, I'd like to say, welcome back, first day of school. I had two high schoolers in my house. Of course, there was a glitch. Now, they weren't so upset about the glitch. They were like, oh, I get an extra hour to, to kind of, I don't know, I don't think they went back to sleep or anything, but they were a little excited about the glitch. And it wasn't a glitch, it actually was a cyber attack. But it was an interesting morning for them, but welcome back. And of course, anything that you're trying that's new for what everyone in the country, basically, you're always going to have things that happen. So I think flexibility is the key. Happy birthday, Mr. President. Go ahead and get, I don't know how old you are, but I'm going to have to find out. I have to check with Jen on that one. And also, thank you to Mr. Correa for making sure we're getting all of our PPE that we received out in the, and thank you to the executive team, Dr. Fagan. Thanks for the communications team for putting together the inspiring moments. And you know, and one thing I'd just like to say, you know, I think a couple of comments were around PPE. You know, I think teachers, a safety period in the district is our number one priority. Absolutely. So having what you need is a priority to us as well. So we will keep, you know, asking those questions and making sure that you have everything you need, especially before students are back face-to-face. That's the goal here. Just wanted to kind of piggyback, you know, to speak to that. And I know the mask, you know, we're not supposed to answer questions, but I'm just going to speak to the whole mask thing. First of all, my glasses were fogging up, and I wanted to see the names in the comments here. But I also just wanted to say for the record, I did check with outside council last meeting, and that since we have our Plexiglas here, that it's actually okay for us to remove our mask on the days. So just wanted to, to speak to that as well. I specifically asked that question. And then last thing for me, Lori Toomey, Ms. Toomey, congratulations on being accepted into the Leadership Tasme program. I was a 2019 graduate, and I think you absolutely will love that program while you are working on earning your Master Trustee designation. I truly believe you are the perfect candidate, and that you'll just enjoy it. It'll be a wonderful year. And I know you already know quite a bit already. You're a very intelligent, brilliant woman. But it'll be eye-opening to kind of see what else is out there too.
How much do I owe you?
That's free. But congratulations. I'm really proud of you.
All right. Thank you very much. My house this morning looked somewhat like NASA. We had TVs going, we had Chromebooks going, laptops. My eighth-grade daughter was in one room. My sixth-grade grandson was in another. I'll let y'all figure that one out. But, you know, we were fortunate. We didn't, we didn't get kicked off the, the server and all that stuff. They made it through their entire day, got their work done. And, and I really appreciated what they did. I mean, for RJ coming in as a, as a sixth grader, I mean, I taught middle school one year, and arguably, that was one year too many. It's tough. It is tough. Those sixth graders are coming in, and they were the top dogs where they were at. And they're, and they're coming in, and they're trying to figure it out, and they're looking. And my daughter is like a foot taller than my grandson, and he's kind of like, oh, my God, she's an eighth grader, you know. And the eighth graders, well, now they're top dogs. And poor seventh graders are sitting there in the middle going, where do I fit in? And, and it's even more difficult when they're at home, trying to figure out where do I, where do I fit in? You know, I think, well, I'm not going to speak for the, the, my other colleagues up here, but we all want the kids back in school as soon as possible. We want it done in a, in a fair way, a safe way, an efficient way. The, the challenges of, of online learning, the challenges of measuring what data is real, what data is not real, what is a good metrics to use to, to say, okay, if we get to this point, we can do this. And, you know, it's, it's even more challenging when there's not a single authority out there that can agree on any one of those data points or how to measure that data point. You know, Dr. Fagan and I have talked a lot about this point. And, you know, when the governor said it's up to the local school boards to do what is best for their community, that's what y'all elected us for, good, bad, or indifferent. We're here to do what we feel like is best, not just for our kids or our grandkids, but all 45,000 kids and all 6,000-plus staff members. So balancing that safety issue and the fears that are out there, they're real. Those fears are real. Whether, whether I agree or disagree or whatever, the fears are real. The challenges of learning at home are real. The challenges of learning on an AB schedule are real. But I will, I will tell you this, and this is what I'm so proud of, about being a product of this community, born and raised here. Went to school here. Y'all have heard the story. I'm not going to delabor that. This is home. This is home for my kids. This is home for my grandkids. What I am so proud of is we had, I don't know, I think 52 speakers or 48 speakers, something like that, last Monday night. Everyone was very respectful, both sides of the equation. Should we go to school, go back to school, should we not? Tonight, we've had, I don't know, probably 25 or so, 25 or 30, both sides of the issue. Very respectful. We're family. UML ISD is family. And we're overcomers. I said this last Monday night, there hasn't been a year that has gone by since Dr. Fagan was announced as a superintendent that we didn't have challenges that we had to overcome. I remember back when we had the hurricane, had to shut down Kingwood High School, and combined Kingwood High School and Summer Creek High School in less than two weeks. Don't use our babies as an experiment. Our babies can't go over here, or I, we, what happens to my kid if they can't get tutorials and so forth? It worked. It worked. Because of the time and effort that her team put in, in such a short period of time, to make that work is amazing. And I'm sorry, for some people in our community to not give her and her team a benefit of a doubt and basically accuse her of not working, that's insulting, to say the least. Now, it's a small percentage. I get it, because the vast majority of everyone, hey, we're there, we're representing our kids, we're going to make the best of the situation, we're going to do what we've got to do to make this work, because that's what adults do. Adults work with their kids and make sure that their kids are getting the, the best possible example in their house, whether they like it or not. I want my kids in school right now. But guess what? When I go home from the office every day, and yes, I do get up and go to the office every day, so does everybody up here, with the exception of those that are retired. But when I come in, when I come home, hey, guys, how was school today? Well, it was great. It was great. If we as an adults can be positive about a deal, a deal that, a hand that we were dealt, guess what? The kids will overcome too, because they're going to follow our example. But one thing, as, as president of this board, I can assure you, is that we're going to do everything in our power to give Dr. Fagan and her team all the resources that are necessary to get our kids back in school as soon as we possibly can in a safe and responsible manner. And I'll finish with this. Dr. Fagan gets a lot of the, the atta boys, she gets a lot of the blame, she gets it all, because she's superintendent. We hired her because of her character. We hired her because of her vision. We hired her because she is an overcomer. One of the, one of the people in this room that, that in my opinion, don't get enough credit for the things that they do behind the scenes, that's Mr. Nolan Correa and his team. They're the ones going in, changing out the filters. They're the ones going in and making sure we have all the PPE. They're the ones going in, making sure we have enough sanitizing stations. They're the ones going in to make sure that whatever happens tomorrow, the 24th, September 8th, whatever it is, that our schools are going to be clean, they're going to be safe, and it's going to be an environment that's conducive to learning for our kids. Because at the end of the day, it's not about us. It's not about any of the adults in this room or any of the adults watching at home. It's about our kids. Our product, our product is how students are achieving education, period. End of story. It's not about egos, it's not about power, it's not about politics, it's not about anything. It's about kids. And it's time that adults get out of the way and let kids learn.
Happy birthday, Mr. President. Well, it has been a great day back. I've really enjoyed seeing, we had so many teachers and leaders and folks post really positive things all over the place. That is the very best part of my day, when I can find two minutes to see what's been going on and all of the, the traffic. I really value that part of social media, connecting large districts across place and time where you can feel like you were there. You can see what was going on. And it was, it was a great celebration of getting back to school. And over and over again, I saw teachers say, I was so excited to see my kids, I was so excited to see my kids. And then kids saying the same thing, so excited to see my teacher. And so that's, that's one of the, you know, the best sides of us. And I just want to say this, UML ISD is full of the best educators, the best custodians, bus drivers, police officers, principals, assistant principals, counselors, nurses, the best. They're the best. They are professionals. They are courageous, they are smart, they care about kids, they do what's necessary. They're honest, they're trustworthy, they're reliable. I could go on and on, and it's all true. They're the best. And one more time, they're rising to the occasion. They're taking a situation that most people would run away from, and they're figuring out how to make it all work. Is it perfect? No, but neither was what we were doing yesterday, or the day before that, or the day before that, or even six months ago. They're doing incredible things for students. They're taking feedback from families. They're taking feedback from leaders. They're adjusting all the time. They spent their entire summer learning new platforms and new strategies and learning sets. At the same time, the Professional Development Department, Teaching and Learning Department, were writing asynchronous learning plans that have to be submitted to TEA for approval. You know, we get those things, and we start working on the plans, and then they change them a little bit, we change ours a little bit. But we really, really try very, very hard to meet the needs of our families and our staff to the very best for our ability. And sometimes that's more challenging than others. And sometimes that's more challenging than others. Uh, this morning, um, I was, I was one of those parents who was saying to my fourth, fifth grader now, I guess, what do you mean you can't log on, you know? And, and that may not have gone that well and I may have had to apologize later, but, um, so to that end, I'd like to give our chief technology officer, Dustin Harden, uh, an opportunity to, uh, speak just for a second about this morning. I think it's important that everybody understand, uh, we've talked about a lot of the parts and pieces and all the people working these hours. When you decide to go with, uh, three different platforms and you have to sync those with, uh, e-school, because T E A says the only way you can count the attendance of students who are online is if Schoolagie, Google Classroom, and also CSO can demonstrate that those children were engaged and that has to sync back with Schoolagie or e-school so that then we can submit the P E N S report so that T E A can count the students. Guess who gets to do that? Dustin and his team. At the same time, they're ordering Chromebooks, thousands of them, distributing them, making sure the warranties are good, backfilling Chromebooks we're handing out at campuses, uh, adding more Chromebooks to campuses because they ran short and needed more, making sure that we have what we need for our students in that way. Upgrading the wifi on our, on all of our campuses, so outdoor spaces, which are really good learning spaces for coronavirus, uh, have access to wifi. So you can have a group of students out there with Chromebooks and still be on the internet in UMBL ISD every single campus. That's Dustin and his team. They have done an extraordinary amount of work very quickly because the asynchronous and synchronous learning plans from T E A were not posted, you know, months ago. They were posted weeks ago. And, and we've had to respond to that timeline. So, um, one more time, one more sleepless night for Dustin and his team. That's not, that's not unheard of in their, their space. So I'd like to introduce Dustin Harden, Chief Technology Officer, UMBL ISD. If, if you are bringing tacos, whoever was, uh, on Twitter saying that, they do like tacos, Dustin and Fong. And Dustin's going to share with all of us just a little bit of an update about this morning and, uh, where we're going forward.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Dr. Fagan and board. Um, I apologize to really all the teachers, um, staff, families out there. This really was unprecedented this morning. Um, there's a lot of misinformation about, uh, what happened. I, I want to address a few of those things. To say that we would lie or we would say that, oh, it's a cyber attack and it's not, is completely untrue. Just yesterday, uh, we had a load problem with our email server. Whenever 7,000 teachers tried to email out, uh, to eight, 80,000 parents, basically, um, it backed up the email relay server. Uh, we were very transparent about that, emailed the entire staff saying the email server is backed up. We see there are 43,000 emails in the server and those are in queue to go out. This morning, that, that was not the case. It wasn't just a blanket, oh, it's a resource problem. Oh, we, we need to scale up further. It wasn't as transparent as that. Um, and I'll get to that here in a moment. Uh, in addition, to say this wasn't a cyber attack is also just bluntly not true. We actually had outside consultants come in, uh, and look at the systems, both our firewall and the MyUML system, which is a Linux server, uh, for the technical, I know we have a lot of technical people in this, uh, community. Uh, we looked at the logs of that. Uh, one of the consultants in particular, uh, you know, he's a C C N P certified ethical hacker. I mean, his list of credentials goes on and on. His exact verbiage that we have in it, in writing in our report. Um, so whoever said they weren't going to do an open records request, by all means, we're extremely transparent about these things. The exact terminology is information is consistent with a T C P, a T C P send flood attack where the attacker sends high volumes of send packets to a server, causing the server to reply with send acknowledgements, leaving ports half open, awaiting a reply to a host that does not exist. That is from a consultant, not someone in UMBL ISD. So we did the work. We, we made sure that we, we did everything we possibly could. And the timeline of this i- is really phenomenal. I'm very proud of my team for what they were able to do. But I first just want to go over what MyUML is because that's also, uh, sometimes confusing for people why we even have this. Um, it's a system that, uh, is built by a company called Identikit Automation, which is based here in Houston. Over 250 districts use this in, uh, U S and Canada, including some major districts like Katy, Austin, Dickinson, Spring, Aldine. So this is not a one-off system. This is a widely used system. It's the application portal that we use for teachers, staff, uh, and students, uh, as a single sign-on and, uh, kind of a password reset self, self-service system. We make sure that right people have the correct resources and it helps with all of those things. This is also what we're using, as Dr. Fagan mentioned, to help with our asynchronous attendance. In fact, at, by 10:30 this morning, even with the problem, we were able to pull the data that 29,077 students had authenticated into MyUML with no problems. So, um, those are all the things why we're using this system. I always think it's important to talk about the why. So let's talk about the timeline real quick because again, if you hear these major outages like this, usually companies sometimes have a two-hour, uh, timeframe of, of getting things up and running. We were first notified about this about 8:05. Um, again, this, this, I think this may have been tweeted out or people may have seen this message about the send flooding. Before the possible, there were actually IP addresses. We, we couldn't send those out obviously, so we kind of scrubbed those in the, the screenshot. But soon as we saw this, this is the first thing we, we've, we found, if you Google send flooding, that's a type of DDoS attack. We immediately didn't want to just start throwing resources at the system. We needed to do a quick investigation to make sure we knew what the problem was. Because if it was, and again, evidence points to where it, it was a DDoS attack, throwing resources at it wouldn't have fixed the problem. It would have kept filling up, the CPU kept filling up the, uh, memory. So we saw this literally two minutes later, and these are, you know, in text messages and Google chats and everything that we're doing. Cause I, as you can see, the times are very precise, contacted some cybersecurity experts. We restarted the server at eight, uh, 28. Again, I T people, we know, did you try restarting it? So we did. We just restarted it. See, that couldn't hurt anything. Everyone can't get into it. Let's try restarting it. Still didn't work. Got the cyber incident response team on the networking side on, uh, right after it restarted. And by nine o'clock, the attacks started going down. Um, and here's a, a just quick graph of what this looks like. Yesterday with no problems at all. Not sure why this won't go away. Hello. Uh, we had 20, there is 24,000 students authenticated yesterday with no problems. You see the graph on this. It's, there was not a giant spike. We expected a spike today, obviously. That's going to happen. It's sized appropriately, the server is, everything was fine. That sort of a spike, 43,000 sessions in a one-hour period, while still there were only 7,000 students authenticating, it, it didn't add up. So we really did the work to make sure that we understood the problem before just attempting just, you know, as the kind of gunslinging, just trying to fix things. We wanted to diagnose it first. We had to within the, the first hour and I believe we did. So I, I, I think that's overall, make sure everyone's being as transparent as possible with this. That we're, we're not trying to hide or use cyber attack as an excuse. Th- this is actually what happened. So.
Thank you very much, Dustin. Uh, we appreciate that level of transparency. One of the things that we always strive to do is provide our community and our family with all of the information that we have available. Sometimes when you first get the information, it's sort of like foggy because you don't really know for sure. And Dustin hasn't had a chance to really figure it all out. But we want to push out information so that parents like me stop arguing with their children. And, um, and also give teachers workarounds frankly and say, hey, go to your website, go to your Zoom, go to these other things. They work. But the, the Google sign on the A MyUML isn't going to work. So in any case, I appreciate that. And just know that we'll always put out the information when we have it, when we think it's correct. And there'll be times when we have to correct it, no doubt about it. But, uh, in this case, Dustin and him, his team were accurate in their hypothesis. And we appreciate their hard work in getting that up and running again today. So, um, from there, I just want to thank everyone in UMBL ISD for their patience, for their support, for the, the kind notes and messages and cookies you've sent our teachers. And, you know, there's just been so many great things that are happening, uh, and it's, it's the reason why this is the very best place for children. Because it is a children-centered district and students do come first. And, uh, we're going to have some, some more challenges, I'm sure this year, but we're going to work through them together. We're going to continue to be, uh, a personalized school district that cares about each one and offers choices for our students and staff. Work together to resolve our concerns to the best of our abilities. And, uh, we thank you for your support and, uh, the confidence that you have. And every member of my team, I just want to say thank you. I know you're working constantly around the clock, uh, to really meet the needs of everyone. It's much easier to just say, this is what we're doing. We don't care what you think. That's moving forward. It's much more difficult to try to meet the needs of individual people in your system, both staff and students and community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Uh, now our next, uh, order of business is our, um, Board and Association committees. Uh, so let's go to advocacy committee, Ms. Timmy.
Uh, no update at this time.
Audit committee, Ms. Morrison.
Yes, uh, the audit department is gearing up for their operational, uh, audits for the year and we have a meeting on September 10th.
Okay. Building and planning, y'all should have received your, um, your updated minutes from our last meeting and also the bi-weekly report of status on all the jobs that are, that are currently in place. Uh, you can imagine, um, all, all projects are still going. Uh, they're on time. They're at or below budget. But, uh, as we mentioned earlier, Mr. Correa and his team are kind of splitting duty between bond projects and getting the school year kicked off in a safe manner. So, uh, we'll be meeting again in the 18th. So, um, we will go from there. Evaluation committee, Ms. Lamont Dixon.
Uh, yes, first, um, I think the committee is actually called the Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee. So we probably need to update that on the agenda as well. So we, we did meet, um, we had a, we started our preliminary conversations, um, about diversity, equity and inclusion. And so just to let the rest of the board know, one thing that we talked about is maybe bringing that conversation, to, to discuss a little bit more in depth with, on our board retreat, the board retreat. Karen is working on some different things and different options for us. So you should be getting that information soon. Hopefully we can find a, a date that works for all of us. I know that's always challenging, but I'm confident it'll happen sooner rather than later. Um, also I'd like to thank, um, the young ladies who spoke at the last meeting that we had, uh, the young students from Atascocita High School, Maya, Martha, Madison and Anaya. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, that's part of our conversation. We're trying to figure out what works best for UMBL ISD, what that should look like, what we want to commit to. And I've also reached out to Mr. Kramer to kind of have some preliminary conversations on his thoughts as well, since that's his domain in our district. So just know that we are working on it. We're trying to put a plan together. It's not an agenda item as of yet, but it's something that we have not forgotten. I know lots going on with the pandemic and getting back to school and reopening. But it's definitely something that we're still discussing. Um, and last, our next meeting will be meeting after the September board meeting and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance committee, Mr. Scarfo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, uh, report on a couple of things that Mr. Seal, uh, made us, uh, provided some information at our last meeting. And, uh, one is to, we're getting a good response on the, um, employees selecting the, the new plans, the new health plans that we offered, as a alternative to T R S plan. So that's a good thing because, um, I think they will, uh, can see not only saving money, but also, um, better coverage. And then the other item, uh, great news on, on the interest rate front, as we sold, uh, the last tranche of, of bonds. We were able to get those at an interest rate of 2.17%. And just to give you a, a rough idea of what that means for us. Uh, when we were putting together the projections, uh, preparing for the bond referendum and, um, and then the whole bond, uh, plan, they were using a 4% uh, rate as the, as the proxy. And, um, the interest rate that we're paying at 3.89% on the bonds that were sold in 2018. And we were hoping to get a rate of about two and a half. The savings compared to that 4%, we're, we're going to save with this rate that he was able to, uh, secure through our underwriters, uh, about $62 million of interest savings. And not only do we save the interest, but it also helps to increase capacity. So it has some domino effects, all good effects. So that's a great thing. Um, interest rates remain low and, um, and hopefully they'll stay in that, uh, that range when we go to sell the, the last piece of, uh, of this particular bond issue. So that's just great news that, uh, we are getting to save a lot of money. And, uh, and that, that money then can go to other capital expenses and that's, that's a good thing. Our next meeting is on September 1st, uh, and that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. Uh, uh, let's see, education foundation, Ms. Morrison.
Foundation, well, uh, I'm proud to say I have been trained, had my training the other day. Also, the foundation is really gearing up, uh, you know, preparing for the year, getting ready for, we've got the rodeo that's going to be out there. We've got the gala that's going to be out there. And we've got the golf tournament along with the employee campaign. But the board members are working very hard to make this year a great year for the foundation and for our, for our district. So looking forward to it and I hope more news later.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item four, action items from closed session. Ms. Timmy, do we have a motion from closed session?
We do. I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with, with addendum.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor? Seven oh, thank you. Let's move on down to our consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, July 14th. Consent. Goods, professional services and non-construction services exceeding 50,000 in the aggregate or 25,000 individually. Consent. 2020, 2021, construction and construction-related purchases. Consent. Item D, budgetary transfers and amendments, including an increase for outdoor learning furniture, transfer out for technology and C N S expenditures. Consent. Item E, bond fund transfers and amendments. Consent. Item F, waiver of P and I. Consent. Item G, tax refunds. Consent. Item H, approval of R F P 2020 dash 008 educational consultant services. Consent. Item I, approval of R F P 2020 dash 016 dash 07 subscriptions, internet web-based access and software programs. Consent. Item J, board authorization of inter-local agreements. Consent. Item K, change to February 22nd, 2021 elementary day in the 2020, 2021 calendar. Consent. Item L, request to extend the start of the 2020, 2021 school year transition beyond the four-week limit. Consent. Item M, request for 40% campus hybrid instruction for ninth through 12th grade students. Consent. Item N, change order number one, North Transportation Center. Consent. Item O, change order number one, Summer Creek High School additions and renovations. Consent. Item P, approval of R F P 2020 dash 052 Food Service Management Company.
Pull.
That will be a pull. Uh, item Q, consideration of work authorization package number one for the UMBL High School renovation and additions project and quest. Consent. Ms. Timmy, if you could read that consent agenda back to me in the form of a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through Q exclusive of pulled item P.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Seven oh. All right, we'll move back up to item P. Um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a.
Second.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, Ms. Timmy, you pulled that. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Lamont Dixon, you pulled that.
Yes, um, I was wondering if, um, either Mr. Correa or Dr. Fagan could just kind of share the structure of what that would look like. I just think there's some questions out there about what that looks like. If you can clarify for us, please.
Well, I'll start at a high level and then if you need more information, Mr. Correa will be my, my support. So, uh, UMBL ISD's Director of Child Nutrition Services retired, uh, over a year ago. And at that time, Mr. Correa and his team explored all the options available. We, we consistently do that in UMBL ISD. Is whenever we have an opportunity arise, we want to make sure that we're moving forward the very best way possible. The student advisory, my student advisory, had brought up some concerns with the food, that they wanted more food, different food, perhaps a salad bar, things like that. And Dr. Brown wants that, too. And so, you know, Mr. Correa has been consistently committed to really hearing those student responses and parent responses, and trying to figure out a way to stay within the hot lunch guidelines, because we have to do that in order, I mean, it's millions and millions of dollars we get from the federal hot lunch program, and still provide nutritious, tasty meals that look good, all of those things. And so, we went down this path of a third-party approach, and basically, we'll be hiring Airmark to take on that sort of director role, and Mr. Correa can speak more specifically to that if you'd like. But nonetheless, all employees within the Food Service, Child Nutrition Services Division will remain UMBLE ISD employees. There will be no changes to any of their contracts, working conditions, et cetera. We will continue to support them. They are part of the family. We want to keep them that way. This is simply trying a new approach with the director position, so that we can have access to chefs and menus and new ideas and new thinking in our food service program for our children. So, Mr. Correa, if there's anything I didn't cover that you think is important, I'd love to hear from you.
The only thing I would add, Dr. Fagan and Board of Trustees, is that it is a year-to-year contract for, with four years' worth of renewals. So, after this year, we will evaluate whether we're getting better meals, we're advertising it better, we're looking at our efficiencies across the child nutrition program as a whole, and evaluate whether that is being met. And if it is, we'll continue on with that. If not, we'll cut ties right there and move on from there. So, that's the only thing I would add. We're very excited about that. We do have Brian Achilles here that's with us. He is the proposed Director for the Child Nutrition Program. I'd just like to add, he has eight years of industry training and experience with this. So, he comes to us with a lot of experience. He's also an UMBLE ISD graduate of Kingwood High, and is a member of our UMBLE ISD family in terms of living in UMBLE ISD. So, we're very excited to have him here and leading the program.
Yes, well, I mean, thank you very much. I mean, I know in Building and Planning, we got a lot of details on this, but I do feel like there were some questions out there. So, I appreciate the clarification and explanations. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any more discussion on this? Not seeing any. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? 7-0. All right, that is all of our Consent Agenda items. We have no action items. Moving on down to Information Items, the first information item is our Financial Services Report, normal financial services we get each month. Any questions on that? Not seeing any. We'll move to our second information item, which is Board Operating Procedures, Committee Meetings. The floor is open for any discussion. Mr. Scarfo, would you like to start?
Yeah, I will. Mr. President, I asked that you'd have this on here. It's something that I had brought forward, I guess, maybe going back a year. And it has to do with, in terms of transparency, opening and posting our committee meetings. And let me just quote from the government code, right at the start of it, that "Under the fundamental philosophy of the American constitutional form of representative government, that adheres to the principle that government is the servant and not the master of the people. It is the policy of this state, that each person is entitled, unless otherwise expressly provided by law, at all times, to complete information about the affairs of government and the official acts of public officials and employees. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know." So, I bring this forward, because I think there is a lot of precedent in having open committee meetings from government bodies at the federal, state, and local levels, that they do this routinely, such as the Congress, the House and the Senate, the State Board of Education, the Texas Senate, the Texas House, the various authority boards under the Harris County Commissioners Court, like the Sporting, Sports Authority, the Housing Authority, et cetera, the City of Houston. Just, you know, just to name a few. They hold their, their committee meetings are open to the public, many even livestream them, and they, they move into closed session when the need arises. School districts, though, across the state, is one place where this does not occur, and in the striving for more transparency, you know, to be that beacon on the hill that we talk about, I think posting committee meetings open to the public would go a long way to achieving that, to raise, raise the bar for other school districts. As a matter of fact, it would raise the level of transparency of what we're transacting in terms of the district's business. You know, over the years, I've served on all committees, except for the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, which I'm serving on now. And I can tell you, it was rare that a topic was discussed that could not be, that needed to be in closed session. And there are times when that happens, like in Building and Planning, if we're talking about a real estate transaction, you want to have that in closed session, because you don't want to give that information out just at that point in time. And when you're maybe talking about some of our cybersecurity protocols, things of that nature, you don't want the bad guys to know what your defenses are. But this proposal really is more, you know, not about the board, but about the public, being able to, to watch the workings of the board, should they choose to. I mean, maybe nobody would care to show up or, or watch if it's, if we record it and put it out online. But again, it's about transparency. I mean, we're doing the people's business, and they're entitled to watch and listen to what we do, because there's nothing secret. And I can tell you, nothing secret goes on in those meetings. But sometimes, letting people see that, I think, is a good thing. So, what I'm asking in this proposal is that we place on an upcoming board agenda, an action item, so that the trustees can vote. Do we want to move to where we post the committee meetings, or we do not? I personally think a vote for, doing something like this would, would say, yeah, I want more transparency. But again, it's up to every individual member on, on the board, but I bring this up, and would like us to consider having it as an item that we can vote on at a future meeting. And I'll, I'll stop there, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Scarfo. Anyone else? Mr. Lopez?
Yeah, I, several things. I'm kind of, I guess, the dean of the board when it comes to policies and procedures, because I probably drafted a lot of these, because a lot of these committees came into place. When I was first elected, they weren't really there. Some of them were, I think when I was elected, we had the Insurance Committee, School Naming Committee, and really, the committees were there to do the boring stuff that no one wanted to do in a meeting. And then you bring it to a board, kind of packaged. And what happened after Mr. Huberty and I got elected with, with Dave Martin and a few other folks, is that the meetings were running really, really, really long, really long. And I think some of the old timers like myself can remember, I don't know who's here, yeah, we run into midnight, some of these meetings. And so, what we decided to do is, okay, let's move some of the stuff, the boring stuff, or the informational stuff that the entire board doesn't need to know, move into a committee. However, if we do that, all decisions are made by the board, period, full stop. Nothing's decided in a committee. That was the idea behind it. And it's not, it wasn't to shade transparency. In fact, minutes are supposed to be kept of all meetings that are open to Public Records Act requests. There's nothing secret, you know, Mr. Carver, there isn't a secret going on there. It's just boring stuff, mainly informational items. There are certain exceptions, however. Audit Committee, for example, that's a lot of dirty laundry that doesn't get aired in the Audit Committee. The Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that, most of that is private, because we're discussing an employee, the only employee that we supervise, and that's the superintendent. I think the board parts, we could probably open up. Most of our Finance Committee meetings that are important, we have the board get together, and those are open to the public. And most of the time, our newspaper folks show up and, and take notes and write articles about how we're doing the budget. The, if we were to open some of those committees up to the public, the concern back then was, we wouldn't have the whole board there. We wouldn't know how certain board members in those committees would react. Then you would have people who weren't officers of the board, then they, they would, they would may have say or do things that are not representative of the board, because under our current policy, the person who speaks on behalf of the board is the president. If any other board member wants to speak, they speak on their own behalf, which is fine. And so, we have committees, we have chairmen, and they're responsible to make sure that the committee notes get written and all these other things, and get, get passed around. They don't speak on behalf of the board. They don't. The only person that's by policy speaks on behalf of the board is the president. And so, if we start bringing public into those meetings, most of these are informational meetings, then we need to rethink the committees themselves, and bring, we need to bring that information, because if that's, if that's what the board wants, which is fine, doesn't matter to me, is I think we bring it into this meeting, and then we have a bunch of informational items every month, and we just have long meetings. Because what I don't want to have happen, if someone who is a chairperson that has the perspective of somebody that doesn't know any better, to think that they're speaking on behalf of the board, or speaking on behalf of me as a board member, or anybody else, to do so in a committee meeting, and then that gets published in newspapers, something like that, that reflects bad upon where I don't have an opportunity, because I'm not at that committee meeting, to speak up and say, no, no, that's not right. So, if we're going to allow these informational meetings to be attended to the public, my, then we need to scrap all the committees. Except for the ones that, that are, that are under closed-session issues, that we've always had, Audit Committee, Superintendent Evaluation Committee, those, most of that stuff's closed-session stuff. But other than that, I think we just bring informational items to the board and scrap the committees. And that's just to make sure that each board member is able to make sure that stuff doesn't become public that they don't agree with, or something like that. That's, that's, does that make sense? That's kind of the history of how this developed. And again, the history was, we're all volunteers. We don't get paid. So, let's try to space out the informational discussion items among the board members, but all decision, they can bring information back, but all decisions get made at the board table, period, full stop. So, that's, that's the idea behind the committees. It's just to kind of space out the work, space out the informational items, but bring the information back here, so we can then discuss it, not to hide anything, because as we all know, with these committees, there's no hiding going on. And if anybody does want to get what's discussed, again, just to make sure it's clear, there's agendas taken of all those meetings that are open to Public Records Act request. Okay, I think I'm done babbling.
You know, when, when I was elected to the Board 10 years ago, nine years ago, something like that, went to, several of us used to go to a group called CRSS, a group that Mike Moses, former Commissioner of Ed, and longtime superintendent, runs that, that three-day kind of workshop. And I thought it was kind of, it was enlightening about some things, but in other things, they were, oh, you're at UMBLE, y'all, y'all run through a committee structure. It's not, it's not something that a lot of school districts have been able to do, and make it work. But for whatever reason, UMBLE ISD is able to make the committee structure work. And I really didn't understand, you know, what, what was, you know, why it wouldn't work, or what the challenges were. And it's for things that you just mentioned. The, there were things that, that in other school districts, their committees would make decisions, which one is a violation, but two, other board members felt like they were left out of that decision-making. With our committees, the way I was kind of educated when I got on the Board is, it's a way to be more efficient and disseminate information. Committees of three vet, vet the information with the administration, and bring that back to the rest of the Board, you know, with, whether, I mean, we haven't always had consent. We've had where two of the committee members agreed to something and one didn't. And we've had lots of discussion here several years ago about different things. I like the way our committee structure works. I like the efficiencies that it brings. And, and actually, we're more transparent now than we ever have been, because those minutes are being sent out in a timely manner after each and every one of our committees, and, and that becomes a public record as well. So, that's kind of my take on the committees. Anybody else? Ms. Lamont Dixon?
Yeah, so, I wholeheartedly am for transparency. I just wanted to make sure, clarify that. And I don't think our committee structure hides anything. I mean, I think it's very open, very open discussion. What I was going to say, a couple of things. One, since there is a public, since someone can request the minutes in a records request, it almost seems redundant to me to have it open, because if someone really wants to know what's happening in those meetings, they can pull those records. And the other thing I wanted to say, I guess, on top of that is, you know, I've served on a school board overseas with the American Community School in Abu Dhabi, and we, we had a structure more like what you're suggesting, Mr. Scarfo. What I'll say is, personally, just from personal experience, the way our structure is, for me, seems more effective. I mean, I think for me, what I, the way I see it is, you know, I trust the three people on each of those committees to do the hard work, ask the tough questions. I feel like I'm doing that in, on the committees that I'm on, and I trust everyone else to do the same thing. And I'm not saying you don't trust people to do that. I'm just saying, that's how I kind of approach it. So, then I can make a more informed decision when I'm voting, because I feel like everyone has kind of done their due diligence. And then the other thing I wanted to add to that is, you know, and Ms. Toomey, you may find this out, too, with Leadership Tasby. When I was in Leadership Tasby, you know, you share a lot about your district and how it's structured. And my whole class, like, when there was 30 of us, there's 30 different school districts in Texas, and they were really impressed with our committee structure and how we do things. And they wanted to know how it worked and what it looked like, and just, they were always very, very impressed with that structure. So, that would be my say. I mean, I understand what you're saying. And I do think we should be transparent in all things, because we are here to serve others, serve the constituents of this community. But that's, that's my personal thought. So, I'll end it there.
Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I want to talk about what Ms. Dixon said. I was a graduate of 2017, which I'm very excited that you're, you're going to be, because the other piece is, there were 36 members in my class. And when you go, and they were from all over the state, and we talked about how our structure worked. And my class members were extremely impressed, because, because of the way our committee structure is set up, the information that we all come out with is very informative, and it's very organized, and it's very clear. So, therefore, again, we can, we can make a valid vote, because we have the information. It's all been given to us. And in many, many districts that don't function with committees, they do quite well, but there's also some that don't, and that their committee, their board members feel very out of the loop. Because in some respects, with some of the districts that I worked with, one or two, or three members did all the work, and the rest of the members didn't have the information. So, I just want to say, when I came on board, the committee structure worked very well for me, because it gave me time to learn the different facets of being on the board. And it wasn't overwhelming. And I just feel like it's worked very well. And I feel like it is transparent, because all the information is out there. And people, and our public has the right to have it, and they can get it. And people, and our public has the right to have it and they can get it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison, Mr. Scarfo or Ms. Toomey?
So as you all know, I'm the baby on the board. I've served on the school board now for a year, so less than anyone else up here. So I haven't had like Mr. Lopez, the, the history. I have been impressed with our committee structure and the way that it has worked. In the time before I was on the board observing as a, as a commit, as a community member and then since being on the board. I hear, I'm hearing, I mean, I hear what both people are saying. I think as an attorney, that's what I'm trained to do. I'm trained to hear both sides. My question would be, it seems, it seems that one of the big. Drivers is that Mr. Scarfo is wanting to make sure that, that we are as transparent as we could be. But I'm also hearing that there are some, maybe some potential drawbacks to having those opened up and I can actually see them. My question would be, is there and can we think about maybe if there are any alternate solutions? That might keep our committee structure intact, but also maybe provide a little bit different, a little bit more transparency. For example, this is, I'm, I'm just throwing out ideas. For example, maybe we, instead of having the. Agenda and minutes subject to an information request, maybe we publish them in a certain place. So, you know, if someone wanted to ask some additional information, they could from there. I don't know, that's just, it's just an idea. So I, I would say that I would be open to hearing. More ideas that might meet the transparency goal. Maybe it just, it's kind of something to just evaluate ourselves and our processes. And maybe it's something that Ms. Lamond Dixon in, as you so aptly pointed out. Your committee is called the Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee. So maybe in that committee as a, as we evaluate our board processes. You guys could sort of talk through the transparency and, and make sure that, that we're doing everything that we can to both maintain our efficiencies. But also increase our transparency.
Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you. Let me just first, thank you for clarifying, Mr. Lopez. I didn't know you were the dean, but thanks for letting me know that, I appreciate it. I, I guess what I'm having trouble with is where did anybody, I, I don't, from what I heard, I'm not saying anything about scrapping. I love our committee structure, I think it's great. I don't want to change anything about it. There's three board members who sit on a committee, somebody chairs it and a discussion goes on with staff about whether it's building and planning. Whatever the committee is. And even in the audit committee, a lot of what's discussed there, it's you're not talking about individuals. Or you're not talking about a potential lawsuit. There's information that could be discussed in public. And all I'm saying is I, I'd like it the way it is. I, I want it to continue the way it is. I think it's a great structure. For districts that don't do it, I think they are putting a lot of weight on themselves, on, on everybody. Because this is a good way to share the load. All I'm saying is if people want to watch us transact that business, why shouldn't they? To me, that is the highest level of transparency. And I don't see that it, I'm not even proposing that we change anything with the structure. I think it works great. I don't think anything needs to be tweaked about that. All I'm saying is that it's open because there's very little that's discussed in committee meetings. At least in all my years that I've served on them, that can't be discussed publicly. And when it can't be, you move into closed session. That, that's what happens in other organizations that do this. And I, I just want to be clear about that. I don't want to change the, it's a great structure. It works great and it's a great way to get work done. And everybody pulls, pulls their load in those committees. And all I'm saying is let people see it if they care to. We may never have anybody show up and, and that's fine, but it, it's there. And that's all I'm saying is that it's another opportunity for us to raise the bar and lead the way in. Being transparent to our stakeholders. And Dr. Fagan even mentioned about being transparent earlier. And, and I think that's what we all strive to do. So that's all I'm suggesting. And all, I'll just formally request, I would like to see an item, an action item so that we could vote yea or nay. On whether or not we want to not change a thing with our committee structure, but allow people to sit and, and listen and, and, and watch what goes on. Thank you.
So just a point of information, the, the goal for this little discussion is to determine whether we're going to discuss it in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would, I would agree we discuss it in the future, so I, I agree.
To vote.
Yeah.
To put it on the action item.
Exactly.
And that's fine, he, he, it's his prerogative to do so.
Yeah.
It's important.
And then we could vote and people say, no, I think it's a bad idea and it's a bad, then it doesn't pass and that's fine. It's something that I, I would like to see happen. And if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. Because at least four, you have to, have to say yes. And, and I remember when we talked about it earlier, I guess it was about a year ago. Dr. Fagan had mentioned that it would add to the workload. And I guess I wasn't sure about, again, what would change because I wouldn't see that staff would need to do anything different. We were just having a committee meeting and we're having it the way we were having it. And the only thing different is there might be some people in the audience. In terms of while, while we discuss that particular committee's business. So anyway, but yeah, I would like us to be able to, to put it there. And if it gets voted yes, great, if it gets voted down, that's, that's how it is. And that's all I'm asking.
Dr. Fagan?
Mr. Scarfo sort of stole my thunder there, but the, the one thing I just want to mention to the board as you all contemplate this is. If, if four board members are there, it is a meeting, it must be posted 72 hours in advance. And then it adds a lot of work, it does add a lot of work for this staff, this team. So of course, if that's what the board chooses to do, we would certainly just ask for the additional staff that we would need to make that happen. And the other side of it is just thinking about, you know, I, I actually, when I came into the district, I thought, oh, that's a weird structure. I've never done that before as a superintendent. And then as I've worked through it, I actually really enjoy it because we do really dig into all the stuff. And the board has amazing respect for one another. They don't decide for one another, but they ask all the hard questions and then, so when we come to the big meeting, then board members can kind of discuss those things. And it's actually a benefit to all of us. But if we're going to move in this other direction, I guess, I think that we would prefer to just have work sessions as a full board meeting. Rather than have a whole bunch more board meetings because it is a lot of additional work. But again, if the board selects to create a board meeting out of every committee meeting, then we will of course do that. But we would, we would appreciate additional support for Karen's department, Karen's office and perhaps Jamie Mounts. So I just want to mention that.
But you're not suggesting to have a board meeting, you're suggesting.
If it's an open meeting, that's exactly what it is. That's the point I wanted to make. Is, is, can I make a point?
Hang on, hang on. So that, to answer your question, that is correct. And once it's posted as a, like that, then you have. You also have to have the opportunity for community members to speak, et cetera.
Even if it was only three board members, okay.
Because it's posted as a meeting.
That's exactly.
And so any board member could, could log in or could come in. So it's posted as a meeting, Mr. Lopez?
Well, that, but you just made my point is, okay, if you invite anybody to the meeting. That means that you, let's say you're not on a committee meeting, can show up. We have to anticipate that fact because if you do show up, meeting can't happen if it's not posted. That's against the law, right? So what you would do then is you would post everyone for an open, so basically what you're doing now is you're turning every committing meeting into an open board meeting. That goes totally against the idea behind the committee meetings. So what we would do is scrap the committees and we would have more workshops and board meetings as we did before the committee structure. That's the change. So either you choose committees or you choose open board meetings. And the idea though, is that me as a board member, I don't want other board members having open board meetings and making decisions without me there. I'm a little control freak. And I, but also I think that's the obligation of somebody who runs for the board. If you're going to run for the board, you're telling your, the public, I'm going to go and go to every meeting I can. And I'm going to represent you and I'm going to use my judgment in what I think is the best interest of the community and school district. And so we, that's the idea. But if the decisions are only made in, if the decisions are not made in the committees. And they're only made in the open board meetings, then you know, if you're not there, it's not a big deal. Because then you hash it out, you look at it, what did you guys talk about? And then, you know, when the administration brings stuff, you can ask questions to the superintendent, you can ask questions to the committee chairman. To provide information at the board meeting. And that's just how we've done it. But you're turning committee meetings to open board meetings. And then now you're having 20 meetings a month, what you'd want to do is you'd narrow that down. Not 20, four or five meetings a month, you'd narrow that down to workshops. So if this workshop, just like we did before, we're going to cover insurance or what do we, what do we cover? We covered all kinds of stuff, you know, building and planning, you know, we would sit, we'd, we would sit for hours and talk about, we were drawing lines for buildings sometimes. I don't know if you remember that, when we were building Wood Creek. It's, it's just, it's, it's, it would change the way we do things.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Lopez. So according to our, our board operating procedures, if the majority of the board values an item to be put on the agenda, we can do that. And if the president values the item to be put on the agenda, we can do that. I'm not comfortable making that decision for the rest of you, whether or not it gets put on a future agenda. So the other part of it is, the other language is, I have the opportunity to poll the board members to see if this gets put on. As a action item in a future board meeting. So I'm going to poll each one individually. Does, do we put it on a future action item or do we not? And this is to, the action I would be to, to basically change the structure as, as. And it would be, we could discuss it at that point, but the vote would be to do whatever is, comes out of that. But right now I want to poll to see if you would like to put it, see it on a future agenda item, Mr. Lopez?
I'm fine with putting on a future agenda item to discuss, I don't want to not discuss it. I guess my, my point is, is that, yeah, I'm not going to be in favor of it. But if we do decide to, to change it, we're going to need to work with general counsel to change our policies.
Okay, so, and I'm not going to add my two cents there because I don't want to entice anyone else's vote. Ms. Morrison?
I'm going to agree with Mr. Lopez because I feel uncomfortable with the changing of the structure. But I don't, I feel like, okay, I don't mind discussing it. I just, I want to, I just, I'm just real leery, but.
Okay, Mr. Scarfo?
Well, of course, I would want it to be there.
Ms. Lamond Dixon?
I don't mind it being an action item on a future agenda. I, I think that would also give us more time to do some research if that's needed and to look into it. So I'm okay with it.
Ms. Toomey?
Yeah, actually, I, I would like to see it as a future action item. And in preparation for that action item, I would also request that it run through. The Board and Superintendent Evaluation Committee with consultation with counsel. So they could maybe give us a report before the meeting. Because I think there's, I think there's some, there's some research items that need to be done in preparation for that vote.
Ms. Rangel on you?
I would, I would requested it be on the, on the agenda. I think it's a good thing to talk about.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Lamond Dixon?
Just wanted to say if it's going to be a future agenda item, our next meeting isn't until after the next board meeting. So it would need to be after September.
Okay. In my opinion, we have discussed this already. I don't see the need for it to be discussed anymore, other than through a committee looking at ways to make it better. But, so I would say no, but that's why we do the poll. And so six, six, one, to put it on the future agenda, so it will be on the October agenda. Okay. Next information item is item C, back to school planning and protocols. You all should have received a communique from Dr. Fagan. That based on some of the requests you were getting and that you had asked. So questions, concerns about that? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Toomey?
So thank you, Dr. Fagan, for the very, very detailed information that you provided. I did think that there was one area that I think that I'd like for you to just to speak with to make sure that it was all cleared up. And that is for the next two weeks, we have a combination of. It is asynchronous learning with some synchronous components. And I would love for you to just explain that portion of it in just a little bit more detail.
I think my mic was going to work, okay, thank you. So when online learning became part of the Texas educational landscape, TEA did a lot of work defining each component. Synchronous versus asynchronous learning. And for what, what that means, synchronous would be like me logging in to every period of the day to the class that I would have taken in person. And sort of being in a fishbowl, you know, the fishbowl sort of scenario where I watch what's going on. I might be able to ask questions and stuff, of course, and then I do the exact same assignment they do just from home. Then, and by the way, synchronous learning is not allowed for pre K through two, that's not an option. You cannot even request it because I, I assume it's because TEA doesn't feel it's an appropriate learning strategy for early childhood learners, which I would agree with. Asynchronous learning is more about teachers identifying the outcomes for that particular period of time. For us, it's about a week, we're doing a week at a glance. And, and then posting the requirements for students to, to learn and then demonstrate their abilities on those topics. And then also including synchronous opportunities. Meaning I'm going to do this chemistry experiment on Thursday and during these periods and these times. And you're welcome to log in and be part of that because you wouldn't have it at home. Or you can watch the, the, the video that I take of the, the demonstration later. So it's, it's an option. But it allows students to have synchronous components of that instructional experience. To apply, so if you choose to do asynchronous or synchronous or both, you have to apply to TEA to do that. The requirements for synchronous learning are tied to old legislation that's been in Texas for a while. Because Texas has had online learning. And that online learning legislation was born of a different time, not a coronavirus sort of thinking. But there wasn't time to change all of that. So TEA basically took all of that legislation and lined up the components of synchronous learning. Which decent, disincentivizes some of it for, for school districts. The asynchronous component was born of the coronavirus era and is much more flexible for teachers, for students, for families. So in, in theory, a family who doesn't have an opportunity to support their child until maybe in the afternoon can do that because it's asynchronous. They don't have to be exactly when the teacher. And at the same time, our teachers, of course, post opportunities for students to log in throughout the day and, and have office hours and tutoring and various things like that. So we are in UMBLE ISD, offering in-person learning. We're offering asynchronous online learning with synchronous components. And then we are also offering online learning, again asynchronous with synchronous components plus UIL. Now, because we offered that third option, the plus UIL part, it makes the asynchronous even more important. Because if I have chemistry fourth period and my teacher Liz, who's a stickler, is going to make me asynchronous every day. I have to log in, I have to be there the whole time. And if I have fifth period banned, there's no way, right? There's no way I can have transportation to banned beyond time because I will be logged in doing chemistry. And this is one of the things we heard from our families in the spring is, please make sure that when teachers do post synchronous opportunities, that they don't overlap accidentally. Please make sure that our students who have selected online plus UIL have ample travel time and the flexibility in their day to be in band and do their online learning. So as we've navigated these new waters, we are using an asynchronous model with synchronous components. And when the synchronous components bump up against fine arts or athletics periods, then they will be posted, recorded and posted. So that the students can watch them later, if that's. if that's what's necessary and they can still make their UIL events and opportunities.
So I just want to be completely crystal clear with an actual concrete example. So, so today was period, or sorry, tomorrow is periods two, four and six for your, for our high school students with Zoom opportunities at eight, if they, if they are face to face just for these next two weeks, and opportunities at eight, nine and 10. Okay, that's kind of what the schedule is at K Park. And I know it's similar at some of the other schools. So a student that say is on campus for a UIL in the morning and can't make it to their 8:00 AM Zoom, all they have to do is log in later and watch it.
That's right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Mr. Scarfo.
Since we're on, Dr. Fagan on the online aspect, what have we done to make sure that there are safeguards to the integrity of the system in terms of, you know, testing? And I'm talking about once they go back face to face, particularly that you have students on campus who, well, when they're taking tests, they're going to be there. Have, is there, are there any things in terms of platforms where, you know, screens that aren't, that they, they timeout after a period of time because you're not doing anything? You might be looking something up. Or have we thought, is it possible to have testing centers where say the online students would come into a place that'd be proctored to, to do the testing? I don't know how, that's probably too involved, but I know that sometimes colleges do it that way too. I just wonder, just how, how do we assure parents who have their students face to face in, in, on a campus that they're, that people who are doing online because they, they don't want to be at, or they don't want their student to be at school, that there's nothing going on that compromises the, the students on campus? Because things do get competitive at high school in terms of, in terms of GPA and all that. And it, it is a big issue. And I know, I don't know if there's really a, a good solution, but I just.
Well, a couple of things. So some of our CTE courses require in-person demonstration of learning in order to receive a certification. And so when we have assessment requirements like that, the students will have to work with the teacher to create a scenario where they're comfortable or they won't be able to receive that requirement. That's the information that we have today. So there's that. Next, I will just tell you that our teachers are very savvy about this. And the, the, the test questions that you give online learners are oftentimes different, more rigorous because you know that they're going to have the access to, to open notes, if you will, than maybe the assessments that you give in person where you have that more proctored situation. So that's another thing. But the third thing, and Donnie, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I can't remember the name of the software. If one of you want to go to the podium and, or you can do together. But, but Donnie Bodron, who's assistant superintendent for middle school and one of the, the pioneers in bringing Schoology to UMBLE ISD, has been working on this topic regarding assessments through software. So Donnie, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So we purchased Respondus, which is a lockdown browser. It works with Schoology platform so that teachers can basically can control the environment when students are on, taking a test or taking a quiz so that they can access other platforms. So that, that is one piece of software that we purchased that works in sync with Schoology so that when, when teachers are using that, they can use that as a, as a method to control the environment. And we've also worked with Dustin and some of his team to look at some other pieces of platform or some other software that's out there. We're still looking at that. There's some out there like Proctor U is, is some software that, that, you know, colleges and universities use it all the time. I, I watch my kids take tests on Proctor, you know, being proctored through Proctor U. So that's something else that we're trying to explore, so.
Thank you. Ms. Lamont Dixon.
Well, I'd like to say, I actually did have a lot of questions, but most of my questions have been answered. I would like to thank you for the thoroughness and all of the details that you put out there. And you know, one thing that, you know, Mr. Scarfo said, yeah, I was a little concerned about that as well, but I've taken courses online and Proctor U. There's so many different ways to do that. Even in the spring, I'll say that my son had to take some tests. And I know the teachers don't want to add to their plates, but she actually watched him on Zoom take the test. I mean, so I think there are so many different ways to make sure students are doing their supposed to be doing. But thank you for the thoroughness and all of the details. Lot of great reading. I appreciate it.
Guys, I had one thing. So we provided to the board, so every department in the district has been working on online learning, in-person learning, online plus UIL learning with every single thing that we do, whether it's advanced academics or English language learners or special education 504 nurses. We, we've done all of this work. So now we've collected it all up into one giant 30-page table. It's literally 30 pages. And we are, have organized it in a way so that the board has all of that information. And then our next step, and it's not beautiful because we haven't made it beautiful yet. That was the, our lowest priority, really. We've just made it thorough and, and informative. And so our next step will be to provide that and post it for everyone and update it. So that will be part of, as things change. Stephanie's done a lot of work on contact tracing and, you know, the TEA guidelines on that change pretty often. So I just want to reiterate for people, even if we send it out, just know that the one that will be updated will be on the website and in a downloadable fashion. So thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Scarfo.
Yeah, Ms. and if you don't mind, there's a couple of other things I would like to just touch on. One of the things I had read in, in the, the write-ups on, online, I, I'll tell you, the teachers are just, it's, it's going to be tough. We're, I just wonder how they'll have enough time to, to frequently check in with the online students once face to face starts. God bless you guys. You're just, you're unbelievable. And I know you'll do it. It's just that, wow, it's, it's a lot. And I just wondered, Dr. Fagan, if you could just touch on so that people know how involved the process is that you've put together for contract, contact tracing? And then before you get to that, I just wanted to make sure that in terms of our sped students, because there's a lot that if the ones who don't come face to face, starting the 17th, for those who where online doesn't meet, or isn't able to achieve some of the goals and objectives, do we have any, maybe you don't, maybe premature right now, but it's something I'd like to know down the road, how many we find in that, that position where we might have to reconvene the ARDS to come up with something different? I just wonder how deep that will be. Because I don't know off the top of my head how many are going online. So it's just, that's a concern I have to, what we look at and make sure we can get a handle on that. I know it's, it's not an easy thing to do. But on the other one, I think people would be pleased to hear what we've done on the, on the tracing, because that's pretty involved.
So Mr. Henry Phipps, who's back there, and he's our, he's our expert in special education 504, nursing, lots of different things. We will be happy to bring back information in the aggregate, as long as it's not personally identifiable on that particular topic. Unless, or he's going to bring it right now.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As far as relates to special education, self-contained students in UMBLE ISD, we have roughly 830 students who qualify for the self-contained classrooms as of Monday, the 17th. Of those, 525 have selected to be face to face. About 64% of those students will be face to face as of this morning. The number's climbing as people become more comfortable with coming back to school and doing face to face. We've been working with our individual families. Those who request an ARDS can always request one and making sure that we provide the best possible educations that they can get in UMBLE ISD. Most of our parents are excited about what the board has decided. They're excited about the opportunity to come back a week early so that kids who have not been in classrooms for over six months can get acclimated to the school. Little tasks like getting on and off the bus and where they can do it in a small group setting where it won't be 800 kids on campus. Parents are excited about the opportunity and they feel safe sending their kids back to school with the opportunity to do that a week in advance.
Thank you so much. I hope you can see tonight, we're sort of doing a showcase of the UMBLE ISD district leadership team. I mean, you're getting to meet each person and the specific work they've been doing in preparation. And I, and I, I just want to tell you, I'm so, our team is so impressive. And I know it, you know, I'm biased, but they're so impressive. They know their information, they care about kids, they put them first. And so the other piece of this is, we have two different kinds of contact tracing. We have student, right? And then we have staff. And so Stephanie and Rick Gardner, who is our chief, well, he's our human resource officer for the district, associate superintendent, I guess is his actual title. They worked very hard to put together every different scenario, a person who has symptoms, a person who has no symptoms, a person who's a contact, a person who is, in just every single scenario. And then all of the steps that they will go through in our district in order to return safely for them and for our students. And the other thing that I think is really important, there's two things. Mike Seal and his team, Billy Beatty, benefits folks, they worked to, and Stephanie helped them too by moving the contract through expediently, was to put together free testing for all UMBLE ISD employees. And we have two sites in the district, one in Kingwood and one in Tascida. The results will be available in 36 hours or less. They believe they'll be all 24 hours, but they said there could be like a glut or whatever, and then it'll be a little longer. But 36 hours, I know people that have waited a week and longer. And so, so again, Mike Seal, Billy Beatty have put that together. It is ready to go. Stephanie moved the contract through. That's all available. We have a process in place where an employee gets a letter and their ID and they go when they're free and comfortable, and then the results come back to them. That allows our employees who are close contacts to be tested and perhaps returned sooner. The other thing that I think is important about is the, there was a second thing on the employees, but the student one is different. And the TEA guidelines for students are different. And so we are following those. There's a lot of people that have different opinions on that, but we're going to work together with parents. And TEA has, most recent update is two people with masks are not a close contact. That's good news. So if the student and the staff member both have masks on, there's no close contact there. There's no need to quarantine, test or any of those things. The same is true with being outdoors and, and Plexiglas dividers also prevent teachers from being close contacts and students. So there's a lot of updates that have come through that are really helping us in our contact tracing. But we have really elaborate and detailed plans. The other thing, I remember what it was now, with employees is if you become a close contact and you are sent home by UMBLE ISD for quarantine period, the district is, is taking care of that leave. So for teachers who have said, yes, I'm coming back because I love my students, I love my school, I believe in all of what we do and I feel safe, and they end up a close contact, we don't want those folks to have to use their, their sick leave, their personal days. And so the district will be taking care of that. Rick has put that all in place so that that's all handled. They can get testing, we take care of those days, we bring them back when they're ready to eliminate the possibility of premature spread. With students, again, it's a little different and we will follow the TEA guidelines for students. But we've done that all summer, frankly, with UIL, strength and conditioning, when we've had cases. So that's been a good practice for us. The communication protocols, the identification of the contacts, the isolation of the group, the quarantine piece. We've practiced this quite a bit with students. Not that a lot, but I don't want to overstate it. But we have practiced it and we feel good about our ability to manage that part of this, of bringing our schools back. Is that enough information? Yeah, the, I mean, we're happy to, we will post and share those documents that you all have seen. They're pages and pages long, but they go through literally step by step, every scenario.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I just think it was good for people to, to hear, people who are watching online or who'll watch later, because it's, it's great stuff that, not easy stuff that you guys put together in a relatively short time. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Any other questions or comments from the board? Not seeing any. Anyone want anything for consideration of future board business other than what's been discussed? Not seeing any. It is 9:19.